Yep, all right. We called over the meeting for June 17th for our work session. Appreciate everybody being here. And I'm not asking anybody, so I'll do it. If you would, join me in an indication in the place, please. If you would, priests, please pray your own way. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us out tonight. And thank you for this wonderful school system, for the staff that we have, our teachers, our parents, the entire county that supports our system so much. We thank you for that because we know it's a blessing. Best to go with us through this meeting so that we can make the right decisions. And we know your wisdom will be what helps us make it. We thank you for that. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda? Any questions?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion on Mr. Bledsoe to approve the agenda is written. Second by Mr. Hutchins. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. It is approved. And honors coursework, Surry County Schools honors coursework curriculum writing that the full. And we all have an executive summary. Hope you've had a chance to look at it.
So board members, we just came to you today with an update. This is just a report of the work that Ms. Harris and our team have been working on. The honors coursework has been an initiative. They updated the policies this school year. We've attended several meetings. And I'm going to let Ms. Harris share about the work that we've done. We shared that executive summary. If you have questions, we'll be glad to answer those for you today.
So North Carolina DPI has charged every district in the state with having honors courses specific that meet certain criteria. And I have listed all of those for you. I've also linked in a document that's about midway through the page for the high school honors lessons. And the way that we did this with our secondary teachers, we got every teacher involved that teaches a core class that needed an honors section. Within the current curriculum and pacing guides, I felt like it would be best if our honors courses were linked in a place they were already familiar with because I did not want teachers to have to hunt and find things. And so we have a K-12 curriculum canvas page. All of our teachers have access to that page. It's also our public facing curriculum. But when we write these honors courses, I just want to give you the assurance that we did this based on the local curriculum. So we did not write new honors lessons based on state altogether, just the state curriculum. We adapted our local curriculum to meet the honors guidelines so that we could stay within our parameters. And our teachers need the expectations of that. So every teacher within the math, English, science, and social studies departments has completed honors courses, lessons. There's, within the link that's middle of the page, this is a tiny copy, but it's very colorful. And what we did is we used this document to link all of the lesson plans. And you'll see at the bottom of your tab online, there are content areas at the bottom. There are four tabs. And you can see where the teachers were the ones who created the lessons and dropped the lessons into these documents. So then we took these documents and used the crosswalk and put them into the places of the curriculum guides of where the teachers wanted them to be so they could teach them. So all of this work has been completed with great teacher feedback and participation. We just wanted to make sure that we met the state's descriptors of the honors coursework. And we are ready to roll with this in August. We're ready to go. So we've been doing this on those required professional development days and on early release days and getting our staff together. Science is still going to need some work, of course, because we don't have science curriculum approved yet. But with our old curriculum, we did start that work. Science in high school is not changing as much as it is in middle school. But we wanted to get a head start on this so that we're ready to go through, implement. Teachers have a chance, as the year goes on, to look at new lessons and vet them when they have professional time together. And then we will, of course, be looking at those and adding those lessons in. But this is the work that we've done so far. We feel like it's great work. And the biggest piece of this is getting teacher participation and feedback from our teachers who are experts in their content area. So all teachers were invited to participate, and they did. So it was, it was good work. Yes.
I didn't have any issues with it. I looked through it. Teachers were involved. I'm good.
And I did get a chance to watch the Zoom that you linked in here, about the 15-minute one. And it sounds to me like that they're going to be coming back with some updates in the last half of this year that you can use to make sure we're complying with what they want. Because they actually had the rules in place before they wrote the rules.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And we will have to, and by next year, we will have to sign, we'll have to sign a form that states that we actually are ready to implement fully. But we're ready to go now because we want our teachers not to feel like they're drinking from a fire hose. We want our teachers to be able to implement based on what the state's guidance is within our local curriculum that's already written and how to tweak those lessons to enrich and make those lessons more rigorous for our students that are taking honors courses. So these lessons have been vetted, and we are very proud of the work that our teachers have done in this work.
Were there any significant changes from this year?
So there are no, there are no changes within the local curriculum itself. The changes came into the way the lessons were written and the expectations of, of the lessons and the product that students will produce in these honors classes. And so we wanted our teachers to make sure that if you're taking an honors class, it needs to, the class needs to look different than a standards class because we have students who are competing to be in an honors class. And so we want to make sure, and the state wants to make sure, that you're not just presenting low-level classes to all students, but that we are presenting the class as kids need and desire and want to compete to be in. And so that's, that's part of this work. And we feel like we have done that. And we feel like we're very confident in our teachers and in our, in the work that our teachers are doing. And these lessons do have some additional tasks. I wouldn't say that they're extreme and they're not going to force kids to just do more work because that's one of the things we talked about. It's about the quality of work kids are doing, not just quantity. We're not just going to push a lot of work on, on our kids and say it's honors. And so that's why when you go into the linked page, you can see the dropdowns that the teachers would select from, and they have to meet that area. So we wanted to be very specific with our teachers to say, okay, here are the guidelines. This is what it says. But we want this work to be meaningful and challenge our learners that, that are getting into these honors and IEP classes without making it just a compliance and a checkbox because then, then that's not good either. So our teachers, again, they wrote these lessons. We helped vet them with them, asked them, asked them questions, and they made the changes they felt were necessary to make these honors level classes and to abide by what the state policy is requiring of us.
You got a question? Well, having been there and had to teach the honors level classes, it's got to have more rigor. It's got to have to accelerate. You got to analyze it more. You can't just memorize facts. So appreciate the teachers because they're awesome.
They're amazing.
And I will update you. CTE courses, they are working, they are, they're working on theirs. Neil's still working. We've had it. We wanted to get this process right for the core, kind of learn from it, tweak it, and then we'll take it for CTE too. So we'll leave a report on that later.
I thought it was interesting. Amy was on that Zoom meeting talking about the honors classes and the CTE consultant of the state.
Yes.
So I thought that was interesting. She was there to answer any questions. That's great. Okay, we're good. All right. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Talked about elementary textbook purchase.
There has been one update on the, what was given to the board. It said state textbook money would be used. We included this in our, and I was going back through it, but we included that, this purchase in 181 Esser funds. So we did make, I do want the board to know that this, this was in the original Esser plan and that we'll use PRC 181 for the purchase of this. It's approved.
They didn't give us the extra money from textbook.
We want to keep, you want to keep that textbook because that's your state textbook money. We will say that because we'll have big purchases.
So we can carry that over.
You can carry state textbook money over. And it takes us about five years to say to get to buy anything, every bit of it.
And this is math, right?
This is math.
This is math workbook.
I'll get started. Yep.
So our current elementary math book adoption provides every student with a consumable math book. So kind of like you said, similar to a workbook. So it's consumable. We get, we already within that adoption get a certain number of books based on the purchase when the adopt, when the book was adopted. The problem is, and a good problem, we've increased our student population since that time. So each year for the past two years, we've had to purchase additional books to have enough for every student. So in order to be proactive this year, we want to go ahead and get those extra books ordered so that we know every student starts school with a book in hand. So this number will actually help us to get through the end of this textbook adoption for three years. So this should be all the additional books we should need for that.
So this is not their main math book and a workbook. This is their book?
This is the, it is, I said, it's like a math book with a workbook. But every child gets one, yes.
And they keep book, they keep the whole, $39.90, that's not much for knowing how much college tablet book is going to cost.
So this is just, this is their main book and the workbook?
Their little workbook that comes with it, yes.
Because here, and this is the only reason that I'm asking, because I know in middle school, a lot of times they don't use the workbooks. So that's, that was my question is, is it a necessity? Or they use them in elementary school?
They actually do use them. So I would say that the workbook would be more of that fluency piece. So when I'm thinking about addition, subtraction, multiplication, if I want students to have an opportunity to have extra practice to build fluency, that's where that piece is going to come from. And there's going to be some within that textbook that there's also going to give them that option for that extra practice.
Because I just, my daughters would let them use them in like a truck seat. I mean, it was.
Was it?
Completely. I'm like, well, that was a good way to spend money.
Well, typically, we send anything additional home so that they have support through the summer, you know, and if they can have additional practice to keep, you know, keep those skills going through the summer if there's anything left. And I would say that, you know, some use more than others based on the planning of the teacher.
Well, I noticed that it's pretty consistent numbers going up, but first grade is a lot lower. Is there a reason why we only got 60 for first grade and we've got like 120 for K and 197 for second? Is there a reason?
So when we first did the cohort for that, that was that larger cohort, it's that year. And so we actually in the original price have more in that. And that's why we're trying to even it out. What we're trying to prevent is we want every kid to be ready day one. So we want to have this, you know, ready to go so that we can, that it evens playing field. We don't want students at one school to have a book and students at another school not.
So if you order these now, then we can have them by first day.
We'll bring it to the July 1st board meeting for approval or whatever you choose today.
61,000, 146, 66,000.
We will not place any order until, we can't, I'll just close any year out. So we can't close anything out until, or order anything.
You can't order July 1st anyway, right? Okay. Because we're using next year.
Until July 1st, yeah.
Right, using next year's order of mine. Okay. Even if it's Esser?
You can, I can't order anything right now. It doesn't matter what. Aldra's got us all locked.
She's got you planted.
I know. I'm a military.
Yeah.
We need to take it for two months.
So, but we can, we'll have it. We can, you know, whatever the board chooses to do today, we'll be ready to have and place the order.
I'd like to make a motion that we just go ahead and approve it. And that way, July 1st, whenever you can do it, there's no need in my mind to bring it back to regular session meeting.
And we have a sole source letter from McGraw-Hill. So they're really, they're the one, the matchwork we've already got.
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bledsoe, second by Mr. Goins.
Hold for PRC number.
181 is Esser.
So that'll mind. That's what we got to have in common by December, September, December.
Another reason.
And the other, we can keep holding over textbook.
Correct, sir.
Hey, what, I'm glad we got some good financial mind. All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of McGraw-Hill math textbook, 61,146, 66. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no? Thank you. Now, so I first, we need to write the check, right? Get it going.
Thank you, Ms. Bledsoe.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. IDEA grant. Set some children.
Good afternoon. Thank you guys today.
It's a little cooler in here than it is outside.
Yeah, it's not terrible outside, but it is a little bit better in here. Yes, sir, I agree. So I just have an overview, and I think you guys have it, I gave it to Dove, of our federal IDEA grant, which is how we gain our federal money from the, from the state to be able to house our programs for exceptional children. So I have the overview there. Dr. Reeves and I talked about this last summer because the process, the grant goes through our CCIP process, just like Ms. Luellens and the CTE grants and things like that. But there is a part that he signs off on. So we just wanted to bring it to you to kind of give you the overview of the grant, to see if you had any questions about how we came about. This is the second largest funding that the EC department receives. The first largest that we receive is in state funding in our PRC O-32 grant. And then this is our second largest pot of money.
So this is a federal component that supplements the state to help us with expenses?
That's correct. Yes.
My only question is, it goes off of December numbers, December of last year's numbers and April of this year's numbers. What happens whenever, if there's more children?
That's a great question. So the federal grant only goes on December's numbers. The state grant, the larger grant, it goes off the April numbers. So we do a large statewide headcount of all students that have an IEP. So this one goes off the state. Currently, the state funds us at 13 and a half percent. So what they have said is that they'll fund us for 13 and a half percent of whatever our ADM is in the district. If we go over that, they don't give us any more money. If we're at 11 percent, they pay us at 11 percent and not 13 and a half. But if we have more than 13 and a half of our students identified as a student with a disability, they do not give us any more money on the state or the federal.
Where are we at now?
Basis. 14 percent as of April 1.
So we're a percent over, right?
We're a half percent.
14 and a quarter, I would argue, based on 7,000.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it depends on which number you use for ADM. Last year I was using, I think, like 74 or so.
So we're going to get the 13 and a half if it's over, over that anyway?
That's right. We're going to get 13 and a half, but serve, I mean, if we had 20 percent students, 20 percent of our students identified, we'd only be funded at 13 and a half percent. So we would have to figure out how to make up, you know, take care of the difference of money.
And we were, and we talked about during the budget discussion, pre-K, keeping those classes at the two schools.
Yes.
And we needed to think about the EC, keeping those special needs EC, pre-K classes because of the DDCC. Because that's where we would get the funding from them if we needed.
That's right. In part, we do get, our pre-K kids do count in on our child count for April and December. We also have another grant that we apply for, for those DDC classrooms called the developmental day grant, and that is through the state. We apply for that every time we add a student that's eligible, and that is intensive exceptional children services for those pre-K, three through five, three through non-candor murdered five-year-olds. So if they're in that classroom and their IEP reflects that they need that level of service, we apply for an additional amount of money to help offset those DDC classrooms. And that's out of PRC 163.
So when someone might see a grant, they think this is different funding or addition, this is how we get our money?
That's right.
From the federal state government for our EC?
It's, yeah, it's not, I mean, I guess it could be an optional grant, but it's not like we have to do this every year. It's required in order to get.
Well, that amount of money, I don't see how it could be optional.
No. It's not optional. I will say, I didn't give this to Dove to give to you, but Dr. Reeves has seen it in senior cabinet. In 2007, in December of 2007, our O-60 funds was $1,709,000 in 2007.
So less than $100,000?
That's right.
Wow. 16 years.
That's right.
17.
And the federal, I mean, the state money has increased from that point, give or take, about $800,000 increase. But the federal has stayed within $100,000, give or take.
Just another reason to get rid of the Department of Education that send us the money they spend on.
Well, that would be not, I mean, I don't know about getting rid of them, but it's been a trip. They're looking at a different funding model, but that's not come through yet.
Is that based on the higher ADM being?
The new funding model?
Well, the, since the announcement about the slide.
Then, so back in December of 2007, the child count was 1355. And our most recent in '23, December '23, was 998. So it's a difference of about 350 kids.
That makes sense. So I guess I'll take back half what I just said. Okay. So this is, this is just for our information?
Yes.
Or is it, okay. So there's no action needed at the December meeting? It's just an overview for what we're being applied for because it's without, we can't operate?
That's right.
Any questions? Can I say December? No, Jack, July.
We reapply for this every May.
December is in here. It's confusing, okay?
Every May, this comes to you. This is what provides our private schools with evaluations and services.
See, I messed up and read December.
Through that. But no, there's no approval required. We just wanted to be aware.
He said, I'll have the grant for you. Okay. Any other questions about the IDEA grant?
Moving on, Mrs. Jenner.
We are. You are in December. You're trying to. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. The next one is something we discussed at, I think, last month about a cultural policy change. We need a board.
Well, board members, we had a lot of, a lot of questions about Narcan. And remember the policy from the School Association on Narcan administration? So I, I put Jodi Southern in charge of Narcan for Surry County Schools, and she's done an outstanding job, really just gaining, gaining a lot of information. I wanted her to share it with you today. No action. This is just for information. I do want to, obviously, once you have the information, then you may want to direct me to do something differently with that policy from the School Board Association. So that can be something we take up at the next work session. So I'll turn it over to Jodi.
Good afternoon, everybody. How's everyone doing? So yes, Dr. Reeves does need to just collect some information for you based on that policy. And so a few things, I did talk to the Health Department along with the Office of Substance Abuse Recovery, as well as Chad Hutchins, SRO officer, and our lead nurse. And so what we did discover and find is that with this new policy, if it was approved, and linking it with some Salem Forsites and some other districts, the Substance Abuse Recovery Office is really our contact for this. They would provide the Narcan at no cost. It's free because they have a standing order under statute 90-12.7. And so they can provide it for free for each school. A supply is one box, which is one kit that has two doses in it. And so that's what they can provide for each school. The training is also free through the Substance Abuse Recovery Office. They provide that through their services. They suggested a school team training, which up to three to four people. And that would include your school nurse and anybody that the principal designates to be trained. They say up to three to four in case somebody's absent, you know, somebody's not there. Also, keeping in mind that SROs already carry Narcan, and it's already in our MOU with the shared support. So that would be an extra person who would have it on hand. Storage, they just suggested that follow the information on the packaging. Don't store where it's too hot or too cold, preferably in a central location like a nurse's office where it could be in a safe location but unlocked for those trainees if they need to get to it quickly. They also looked at a procedure, and I talked to our lead nurse about this. She said it would be very easy to do because they have to keep up with the AED information. She said so they could just check the expiration on those boxes at the same time they check the AED. We would just have a checklist for them. She said that is no problem. The Substance Abuse Recovery Office suggested that we do that six months prior in advance when they're getting ready to expire so that we can switch them out. And they just give those so they still have enough time that can be used by EMS because they use them quicker than hopefully we would. So that, they would just switch those out with us. And then there you can see, again, SROs already have that on them, and it's written within our MOU's that they do carry that. Something else that I learned that, you know, if you suspect an overdose, and let's just say it may not be, and you still give Narcan, the person is still okay if you administer it. So I did learn that from our lead nurse and through the Substance Abuse Recovery Office. That was one of my concerns, is how do you know? But they train you on all those and the signs and symptoms and what to look for and how to use it. And only those trained personnel would be able to administer. And then I did provide you with a fact sheet for schools that was shared through the Substance Abuse Recovery Office, just the information there for you.
And we have to administer, just take an oral or shot?
So you can get it two ways. One is through a shot, but we would have a mist. It goes up your nose. You spray it up the nose. That's the easiest and quickest. And that's what the SROs carry, and that's what the Substance Abuse Recovery Office would give us.
And I would think typically, if they've had an overdose, they're not going to be conscious.
Correct.
They couldn't take it orally.
Right. Yes. And the lead, and when talking to Ms. Chatten, she said they prefer the dose that goes up your nose.
Oh, she's still breathing. They can carry it. Okay. So I read in here where it's talking about the non, are the standing orders that that has to be administered by a nurse? What's the difference in that and just having it where you recognize the symptoms through the training to give it to them if you think they know it versus having standing orders of a prescription?
So I inquired about that because I asked the Substance Abuse Recovery Office how they get their prescription, and it's just a standing order through that general statute because it's the Good Samaritan Act.
Yes.
And that's how it's given. If you did it through the, I think it's the nursing subscription, then a nurse would have to be present, which means we would have to have a nurse on all of our cases.
So the Good Samaritan law would help protect our staff if they get it and it wasn't necessary?
Correct. Yes.
That was my question. Any exposure, liability, or exemptions?
And that's another question I asked, and with that standing order through the Good Samaritan Act. And that would be something that she suggested too, to work through the attorneys when considering the policy of including all that information in that policy so that it would be covered.
There's a general statute on this information you can get, provide civil criminal immunity to individuals administering Narcan if they have good faith belief that they're.
And that's part of that Good Samaritan Act.
Yeah.
Yep.
My issue's two-fold. First, it's free now, but when the, the Office of Substance Abuse Recovery runs out of First, it's, it's free now, but when the, the Office of Substance Abuse Recovery runs out of funding, or if they run out of funding, what is going to be the cost? Second, the SRO officer's already happy. So it's already there, and the school's now in emergency, and, you know, we're soon going to have SROs in every school in the county, as long as pile up the, we're digging on there originally.
I can tell you the cost, she told me the cost, it's forty-five dollars a box.
I was going to say, I was in, I was, I was in the pharmacy yesterday waiting for a prescription, and a big pink box, and underneath it said forty-four ninety-five.
Yep, because I did ask her if there was, what would it be, she said forty-five dollars a box.
And if we didn't already have it there with the SRO officer, I'd be more happy to. But me personally, I mean, I'm not going to blame my flagrant, it's hell or die, but...
Well, I think we got two things. Number one, what if the SRO isn't there that day, or training or something else? I think, and the other thing is, unfortunately, we live in a time where we didn't have to consider this. We shouldn't have to, but twenty-one cases in North Carolina last year, if you think how many hundreds of thousands of kids we've got. It's not a high number, but I don't want one of our kids to be it. And I don't think we need even, no, no action, but we need to at least know, because that's one of those recommended policies that we were supposed to at least consider. I think they're recommended, not required. So I think it's good information for to think about it. And that's not to me, I let people come up to me in the community and say they don't think they should have Narcan in the ambulance, because it just gives them an incentive to go ahead and do it again. They know you're going to bring them back. And I, I can't, I can't say that that's my position on it, but there are people who think that, so...
I hate to put it in a position where we didn't have something to play with the form. I'm not even granting that, SRO have it, if they still in that situation, we're just not there on site. It isn't out there, we're cooked, it's made different.
So anyway, all that, I think, we need to think about, but I don't see that we need it. Good information, thank you for this, because I've been really concerned about the liability and, you know, if it, what is one of our students, then I'm especially concerned about what's the name, the drug, the fentanyl? Because it can be late for so many things, and I'm not sure that that would, Narcan, or Maxine Vaxin? Okay.
Thank you for bringing that together.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
And I did get, I will say today, if you need one, and if you're ready, they sent me a distributed talk yet. So I haven't read all this, but I already got it today. But it may be helpful too, if you consider.
A little bit of policy I did, I think, consider there. And the fentanyl, I mean, just, again, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but you know, fentanyl, now they say the majority of it now is made in China, and shipped here. And now there's a drug that'll take care of it, counteract it. Exactly. That's my question. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Justin.
Appreciate it. Now, I'm looking at December or January now.
August.
August? You said I'm moving right to... Okay, all right, got it. Okay, so now we've got North Surrey High School aisles, real quote, so now are these the only going up steps? Like the middle aisle, okay, that's the only thing?
So we should have Mr. Coach Butler, the athletic director, and Robert Dron. So board members, here's the one and only Robert Dron. He rested on vacation.
That's why he's smiling.
Held on to that grandson almost twenty-four hours ago.
I bet you did, and I don't blame you.
On the beach in the house.
Didn't let it go, did you?
No.
They don't rest on just that, so.
So board members, this, this is something that Robert and myself have talked about honestly for over a couple of years, more than a couple of years. And I have a, had a parent approach me either after a game or graduation about the bleachers at North Surrey. They don't have a handrail in the center. And so we do have handicap accessibility to the bottom of both sides, now that we put the concrete sidewalk over to the visitor's side. But there is no handrail going up the bleachers. And I saw this with my mom watching Weatherly's soccer games. She had hip replacement surgery, she struggled on those bleachers. There's just nothing, there's nothing. So I've seen it, seen it as a, you know, just as a, as a son watching his, his mother just trying to navigate those steps. We've had concerned citizens that have brought it to my attention, and I know brought it to Coach Butler and Dr. Badgett's attention. So I asked Robert to get a quote on these, putting a, a handrail on those outdoor bleachers in the football stadium on both the home and visitor's side. So that's what Robert's got, so I'll turn it over to Robert and Coach Butler.
So I hope you have a copy of the quote from Learning Environments. And just to kind of piggyback off of Dr. Reeves, both East Surrey and Surrey Central do have handrails on both home and visitor bleachers.
And we do have on the, the gym bleachers on all of them, right, so this is the only one, okay.
That is correct. So I don't know how North Surrey got missed over the years, but it is something that is greatly needed. Learning Environments is a state contract vendor when it comes to bleachers. They rep Dan Clayton as well as Southern Bleacher Company, which is two pretty major outdoor stadium bleacher manufacturers in the country. So before you, you have the quote, be happy to answer any questions you might have. I have called today trying to get an update on the timeline from, from the time we order these bleachers until they can get those installed, in hopes that we can make this happen at least by mid-August. And I'm still waiting for Mr. Cobb to call me back. He was waiting to hear from the Dan Clayton rep on, he didn't feel like it would be a problem, but he didn't, you know, with this climate we're in now, he was afraid to, to make that commitment without getting, you know, more feedback from the manufacturer. So be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So this is including installation, and it's got the hardware, so basically it bolted through the step?
And it'll have a plate on the underneath side as support. I went down and looked at Surrey Central's before I contacted these guys to kind of see how theirs were fastened on, and that's what it is, it's just a plate, with a plate underneath and then bolts.
And then basically it won't be solid all the way, there'll be breaks, right, so people can cross over, because that's why there's twenty-four hours.
That's correct.
Okay.
There ever some...
Any questions?
No, just one, because it's two eighty over thirty thousand, do we have to have three, or is it because it's state contract, we don't have to have?
Well, with state contract, we do not have to, because those prices are already negotiated and awarded. So anytime that you're dealing with the state contract vendors, you do not have to unless it is a formal process. This, of course, is informal.
So we have, North Surrey has some remaining SCIF funds, those are those athletic facility funds. I've talked to Dr. Badgett, I think she's in agreement that would be a great usage of those funds, so it wouldn't come out of any local capital funds. We would have to amend our SCIF plan with the state, that'd take a, take a little bit of work, but I think we've got a little time, and just fortunate to have those funds to make these, these improvements. Coach Butler, what, anything else that you'd like to say as athletic director?
Those bleachers get slippery at night. Old age or injured, it's slippery whether it's ground or just humidity or pipes filled on the, and we had a lady fall last year at a ballgame, and split her head open. So it's, it's definitely needed, hasn't it, for a while?
I think that SCIF funds and state contract, I'll make a motion to approve it and roll on.
Do you have to be that specific with those SCIF funds?
Every project has to be in the, in the, every project has to be in the plan. This project wasn't in the original plan or the amended plan, so we just have to go back and amend it, send it for their approval. We've done it multiple times.
And I'm assuming they're trying to find ways that people are misusing the money. This is directly, like, safety on our campus.
It's, and, and yes, you're exactly right. So the folks at the Office of State Budget Management will then tie the receipt back to the plan, which we've, and like we said, we would.
I think we would add something that said facility enhancement.
We had to, actually, we had to submit to them a plan listing all the different projects that we intended to use these funds for.
And the estimated amount for each one, because you didn't know yet how much it was?
So when he says amended, that's what he means, we just have to go in and amend our original plan to reflect this.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bledsoe to approve the thirty thousand two hundred and eighty dollars to purchase and install these handrails in North Surrey football bleachers. Second, by Mr. Hutchins. Further questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Thank you, we'll get those things up properly about football soon.
Thank you all, we'll get to work on it, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you all.
Thank you, Coach.
Hey, Robert, you want to stick around for ten one oh eight? I, I'll take care of it, you may get more information. It's an update on the traffic report.
Yeah.
Is it next or there?
No, a little more.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll stick around.
So I think the next one is for Holly, the website renewal? Board business. Has it changed? I got website renewal.
I apologize for that, it was my fault. The website renewal was a five-year contract approved last year, and Colley just found that for me today, so I should have notified you all that, I pulled that off, I apologize.
No problem, that's easy, we said, that's adding five more minutes to our schedule.
You'd like to take some more of these out?
Okay, yep, now mine, I just reset and took it off. Okay, now, board and lunch visits, we saw these last month, and the only difference was I asked Doug if she would change that one in North Surrey to a different Wednesday, because I did have a VA appointment that day, it took me eight months to get, and she was gracious enough to do that. So does anybody have any, that one only changed by just one week on a Wednesday, Wednesday previous, right?
That one too, it was on the same day, same time, that's four days.
They were, but that was...
Oh, that was four days, okay, okay.
Well, we did have, I think, but I thought, I think they were just misprinted on here, they're writing down. The only, we still have Surrey Central and Early College on twenty-fourth, but that's different times. And we have Online Magnet and Central Middle on the same date, but that's one morning, one afternoon. Everything else should be on a different date.
I moved it, we amended it, Sean.
Motion by Mr. Whitaker to approve the schedule that we have here for us. We have a second? We'll take a minute, okay, second by Mr. Goldens. Any further questions or discussions? I actually have them all on my calendar already, so I shouldn't have, shouldn't forget any of them. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, no? Thank you very much. All right, four o'clock, look at this, we are three minutes ahead of schedule. Now we can talk about the executive summary for the Gear Up program.
That is me.
Okay.
I put in, I hope you all have a copy of the executive summary. Appalachian State has reached out to us about being to participate in the school year twenty-four, twenty-five, Gear Up program. And this grant is funded by the U.S. Department of Education through Appalachian State. And I listed the goals there, and the main purpose of the program is it's designed to increase the number of really low-income students to enroll and be successful in a post-secondary education is, is the goal. It starts at a young age, Gear Up students, starting out in the program would be sixth and seventh graders, and then it would just move up, once they went to eighth grade, it'd be sixth, seventh, and eighth, and then they went to ninth grade. So it's a cohort as they go through. Those are the amounts of monies that we would have, year one through the end of the seven-year period. It lists, I listed some of the phases, college campus visits where that would be paid for, summer programs, I just saw on App's website where they had a summer camp, where kids can go up there for a summer camp, which is STEM, it was a STEM camp, hands-on opportunities, teacher and staff support, family and community engagement. I know that's something that we've been talking about with the strategic plan to help families understand that process of going from through school and then into a post-secondary education. ACT, test, academic test preparation partnership, and they would work with families, work with us, and they had teacher coaching to improve instructional practices. So all of these things, we would be able to fund a full-time site coordinator, that would be one of our people, that would be the site coordinator, to make sure that we're following, organization following up with the university. I did list, there are ten schools currently, they're on the second page, who are involved with Appalachian's Gear Up program. Other school systems have a Gear Up. I looked up like Guilford County, Winston-Salem Forsite County, they're just not partnered with App, they're partnered with, with Southern State University. These are current schools that Appalachian State is working with. I talked to Wilkes County about the program, they said it's very, a very good program.
So these are basically surrounding, Talbot County, we're just sort of on the fringe then, if you look at the site.
That's right, and they, I think they started closer to home, and it bridged out and have offered to partner with us.
So is this a need fund for our school system?
It would be for our school system, it's been around, and like I said, I think they're getting more money from the U.S. Department so they can expand, and we, we have a good relationship with Appalachian State.
So even though this is through App, it wouldn't stop us from going to USC Charlotte or even Surrey Community two-year programs, we could take these trips?
No, the, the point of this is not, surely they're, they're want kids to go to their university, but it's post-secondary, that could be preparing kids for to go to Surrey Community College or to be successful. Some of the underrepresented student population, it gives them an opportunity, their families' opportunity to understand that process of not only getting into a post-secondary, but being successful once they're in a post-secondary.
Mr. Vine, I looked at our My Future NC data, and we looked at our Opportunity Youth, you've heard us talk about that as part of the Student Success, the grant we had received that we talked about, PRC one forty-five last month. This is just like another layer of support for those students. We have not been awarded this grant, we won't know, we don't know yet, but we're just informing the board.
App really takes care of that.
They take care of all of that.
We don't do that, they just let us know if we are eligible, because there was some...
We had to do some paperwork.
Some paperwork, and turning, and talk about the, the economics of, of our schools, and, you know, where they're at, because, you know, obviously they want to target where, as you can see on the li, the list, it's really all of our schools would be eligible to be a part of this because of the socioeconomic.
But we hadn't already told them that we will take this, now, correct?
We have submitted the information to them, that was due in May, May, middle of May.
We said we've applied for this one point four million, and we hadn't known about it till today?
That is correct.
So we applied for it, we told them we would be a part of their application, that's semantic, I know it's not really a difference.
That is correct, they, they apply, we just gave them information.
But I mean, what does that do then, if they get, if they get the grant and we say we don't want to be a part of it? Will it affect their ability to get the grant, I wonder? And that may not be a plausible answer, I think.
I don't think so, in my communication.
Well, I personally, because this is what I did, I mean, I was career development coordinator. I see nothing in here that would be a problem, I mean, they even got a person they're going to put here to make sure we're doing the right things to comply with the grant, I would assume, is what that coordinator's for.
Yeah, it's one of our parts, it's one of, it's one of us.
And we'd be able to fund that position for seven years.
That's correct.
And everything else we do would go toward programs that would do these things, like...
That is correct.
When we take a group of juniors to a college, they had to bring money to pay for the field trip, we could use this to cover that for low income.
That is correct.
Okay.
But what are our requirements?
Just income match, we have to do an income match.
Our salary worth they...
Well, that, yeah, that was my, that was my question. We want to have a director from here, one of our people, and we'll move into that position, and they'll be funded by us or by them?
By, by this, by this.
And then at the end of that seven years, we'll have to figure out where we're going to fund them again?
Or we don't be a part of them, I mean, we don't have to be a part of the program at that, at that point.
Gear Up has been around for a long time. I think these systems have had, they, it just keeps rolling over. They keep getting this federal money, it's not to say that they'll, that that well won't run dry. I know in Ash County, we had Gear Up program when I was there, and it's still there. I think same with Wilkes.
Have we got something in lieu of this, or is this...
We're doing this work, all, both are already, already doing this work with no funding. And like, when we do ACT, we are paying, like, we're putting a lot on principals, assistant principals, and teachers. This is another scaffold of support. When we do summer programming, it's another, it's another funding source to help support that and to take the cost off of families and kids. I mean, we were talking about transportation, it would, this grant could just pay to take our kids to Appalachian when we take the juniors. I mean, that would be a, that would help us, help take pressures off the school, we pay, just to pay for that. And then, you know, we've talked about parent and family engagement, Mr. Vine, we're talking with, and that's going to help principals in the end to have somebody to come in and help plan, have some money to do some activities, you know, especially because the first year, if I understand correct, Mr. Vine, correct or wrong, we would target sixth and seventh graders.
That's correct.
I mean, get, have, have a point person to help do, help do that, so...
Which sort of dovetails then with our requirement to start career development plans in the sixth and seventh grade, right? So this would help with that. And I, I know with ACT, a lot of the kids, we're required to give, a lot of the kids don't take it serious, they don't prepare for it. And they don't, and that's one of the reasons our numbers are low. And they don't, and that's one of the reasons our numbers are low. But having somebody like this that could help with the test preparation. I remember we would take entire mornings and say, we're going to go to your homeroom. You're going to prepare for ACT.
You know, we, and one of the things that we struggle with, that would be great to have a person to help, help our principals is to plan those ACT nights for parents, to make it relevant. I asked Kevin, I said, what about fast book completion? Can we slide that in there? But we might, yeah, isn't it in there? Okay, yeah, yeah. So, you know, it's a lot of the work we're already doing. It's just going to provide, again, some help to our principals, our teachers, and ultimately our students and families.
What's the salary of the site coordinator?
They, they didn't put that in there. It's, what I talked to other districts, it was a teacher pay, but it was a 12-month possession.
Yeah, it's not going to be a director, because it's a coordinator.
That's correct.
So out of that 160,000, only 60,000 or a little bit more is actually going to be used for program?
In year one. You see how it increases as it gets bigger?
I guess, I'm sure this is a fantastic thing, but to me, you know, we had talked about this last year before we settled up or applied for million-dollar grants. It was supposed to come before the board. That's, that's my whole qualm with it. And we had another school system here recently that just had to sever ties with Appalachian over. I just, I don't know what our requirements are for it, so I can't be insistent on it. I'm sure it's great, but what does Suri County have to do in order to continue to be a part of that? And I don't know.
I guess the answer, I mean, to me, gives a little bit of it, but I, I guess if we're looking for bad stuff buried in the grant, I don't, I mean, without knowing what the final grant approval is, I don't know that we know that. But I don't think we would go out and look for one of those if we thought it was in there. Not, not every grant is going to have it bad. George Soros does not, not fund everything that comes through the Department of Education.
I didn't say that, but, but I'm just saying it's, it's, it's.
We also, we need to look.
Yeah, and we can't. That's why I asked the question. If we don't, if we decide we don't want to participate in it, we still have time not to do that, because they don't have the grant yet.
It hasn't been worked.
But I definitely will fall. We need to seriously look at it, because I think it's worth it. But I see your point. I mean, we've just discussed it, anything on.
I would like to know what the, what the application question, or, or, you know, what the requirements are of our school system. Because, I mean, and I like Appalachian too, but. Also a university in today's times.
That's something we can get, I would think, pretty easily, what they ask about what the requirements are.
Well, the 10 school systems, this program has been in existence. I don't think there's any, I don't think there's anything that you wouldn't approve of from that standpoint. Positive reviews from those superintendents in those school systems. The lab school you're referring to was something that multiple school systems had been approached by, done homework on and turned down. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, any time something comes up like this, we're going to go through and try to do that homework to make sure we also know that. But to your point, that's one we've got on the agenda today. We want to make sure y'all are aware of it. We don't know if, they invited us to, to, they called us to participate. They've invited us to be a part of the partnership. I think we, we sit an hour and 15 minutes from, from then, just like we're an hour and 15 minutes from UNCG. So we're kind of, we're on the line of that service area. And we have some kids that go there, and we have some that don't, and they go to another area. I mean, if you're in some of those counties, that's, that's where everybody's going, because that's just, it's the natural feeder.
And Winston-Salem State claims us too, because they want us to be in their service area.
We don't have that luxury and don't get as many of those resources. So I do think it is a positive for our school system and for students to be able to have access to higher education at a free, essentially free, especially on the field trips. They're going to take kids on a lot of field trips and give them exposure to colleges, universities that some of our kids would never see.
And prime example of that, we talked about last month, can we pay for fuel? So that we don't have to pay DPI back for the miles on the bus? I mean, that's some of the things I think we could use to save there too. So is it, so can you give us information on what they ask for, what the requirements are? And then while we can look at it before the fall, when we see when it comes back, hopefully approved?
Yeah, we, that is fall. It's in the fall. We wouldn't even start the year.
To give us information, we'd be like, heck yeah. All I'm saying is.
We'd love to.
Just please provide to us before we apply for. Because if we can get more money, I'm all for that.
Yeah, the, the funding of it for our end is just being kind, so.
No, no strings attached for us. That's the.
So Appalachian is going to have to comply with the grant requirements?
Yeah, no, yes.
And, you know, it's interesting, because we're, we saw in our, I think it was at Dawson. Now that they're looking at, and some of the statistics are showing that four-year colleges enrollment is going down, two-year colleges enrollment is going up. So Appalachian's looking for ways to get their enrollment back up.
Exactly right. And it's funded federally, filtered through the colleges to come down to us.
I have questions. That's really. Okay, any other questions? No? So we just, we're going to get some more information on it before we need to.
Yeah, I'll say.
Okay.
Please, please, a deadline for.
Like, oh, no, it's September? I think that's what she said. So we wouldn't start, even start the year with it. So it's not until fall. When.
Okay. So if we could have it back then from July?
We had to do the July work session.
That way we can have more time to talk about it. Anybody have any questions? Okay. All right, North Suri High School traffic report for Sowers and the project.
So Robert, you want to join us?
I'm here.
So board members, this is simply an update on the traffic safety loop that we're adding to North Suri High School. Doug got in touch with Sowers Construction, just to kind of give an update, because I knew you'd want to know today. They will have a surveyor on site this week to establish control with plans on starting grading the week of June 24th. They think grading will take about three weeks, four weeks, depending on the weather. The stone should be down. Paving will start in the last part of July. We reiterated, we would love to have this done August, at the beginning of August. We know school starts August the 8th, but teachers will come back before August 8th. And obviously, you've got a lot of traffic on campus with athletics starting August 1st. I know, Robert, when we talked earlier and you met with all the contractors in the pre-bid meeting, it was consensus that they would start on the main campus area first and get all that paving and grading done before they went down to the bottom. So at least we know that area of campus would be done by, by the 1st of August. Is there anything else from those meetings? Or maybe you've got some additional information that you could add to the safety loop?
Well, actually, I don't have, but yes, that was, we expressed that at the pre, pre-constr, pre-bid meeting that we wanted to make sure top priority was having all the main campus, what we use now, have that completed at least by, you know, the 1st of August with, because that's going to be, you know, we wanted to be able to keep the flow of traffic that they're used to now in consideration if they weren't able to get the rest of it.
So areas like behind the new wing, the stricken area, we got to go where the dumpsters are.
All that has to be changed. The dumpster pad's relocated.
Where are we going to relocate those to? I was looking at, there's not a lot of places.
Just kind of imagine just picking it up and turning it this way. Where it's kind of the back of, it's facing the boiler and where the band and chorus park their trailers. So it's just kind of turning it around.
So next, next Monday's when they're supposed to start grading, whether, 24th?
That's, I hadn't heard that until I got back from vacation. But the last communication that I had before leaving to go on vacation was July 1st. So it looks like they backed it up a week, which is good.
Okay.
Weather looks good too, for the next week or so, so hopefully.
Yeah, if we can just get that toppled off, make sure we don't have any big areas that's going to have to be bridged. We have 2,000-yard dirt to use. We need it.
Yeah. Hope that's some up there.
Yeah, me too. I looked there at the barn going off behind the softball field. There's a big hole there. How do you feel about?
There'll be some, some demolition there too. There's some trees that'll have to be taken out and stuff, so.
The sewer line from the main building down to the counties, does it go down through there too?
It does, and that was the reason we had to shift the road over to the left more at the barn.
Going out toward.
So we didn't interfere with that sewer line, so it kind of dodged it, you know?
Thought that's what that statement.
Goes around.
Okay, good. Good. All right, any other questions?
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Appreciate you staying.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Sorry you can't go back on vacation, but you.
It was, it spoiled me. I won't tell a lie.
I know. Thank you, Robert.
Yes, sir.
All right, Action I, our CTE approval request.
Thank you, Mr. Attic. Just joining, Bert.
Neil.
I'm here. Can you all hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Neil, I have the presentation up, so I'll, I'll.
I, I, I have a copy I'll be taking to start with Slide 1. And then I'll click through mine as, as I tell you to click, and then I'll be, I know I'll be in the same place that they are. Does that sound like a plan?
Sounds good.
Okay, well, good afternoon, board members. It's the time of year. Every year we have to submit our, our CTE local application. We have to have it board approved, and we have to submit it to DPI on June 30th of each year. So it's that time of year again. This is a new plan from the past couple of years. Please remember, these plans are two-year plans. We need to update them, which mid-year or mid-cycle. So next year, we'll come up at this time of the update of the plan. But we got a slide deck here with you for you today that is more or less an executive summary of what's in that big long plan. And then you'll actually see at the end of this presentation today, there's a link to the entire plan as well. So I'd like to go through the executive summary just to highlight the areas that were identified through our process, that we're going to focus on. And then Dr. Dan will go to edit the things she needs to, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. All right, Dan, if you want to go to the next slide?
Okay, I'm on process for creating the plan. Is that good?
Got you.
Okay.
That, that's good. So board members, we, we, we take our business advisory council, the feedback they give us very seriously. We, we, we try to make sure that we are always listening to those folks, so they are a, a big part of this process. We held focus groups back in late winter of teachers, students, parents, principals, and our career development coordinators. We had staff there from certain community colleges as well. We surveyed our CTE teachers. We did a lot of data analysis. Perkins Five, which is federal legislation that governs CTE, has several performance indicators based on things such as credential, credential attainment, post-secondary placement, those five things that we analyze as well. And then our CTE leadership team, which typically consists of myself, Dr. Dan, and Paula Brinkley, who is our curriculum instruction management coordinator, and our 10 career development coordinators as well. Okay, next slide, Dan.
Okay.
So through this process, we identified four main areas where we feel like we can make some real improvements over the next couple of years in CTE. Number one would be middle school CTE. And we've done some work over the past couple of years in middle school CTE, and some things that we're really proud of, like adding agriculture, just the tremendous growth in presence of HOSA and health sciences in our middle schools. But we feel like we still have a lot of work to do there. Number two, to continue to strengthen our career technical student organizations. We've seen a lot of great work over the past two, three, four years in CTSOs. We still have some areas where we don't feel like the participation is maybe where it needs to be. I, I think that one indicator of a strong, healthy CTE program in our high school is how strong is that career technical student organization in that, in that program? So we're really going to push those and try to continue to drive participation there. And you see a lot of good that comes from that, with things such as how our students perform in competitions, FFA competitions. The third thing, we feel like we have so much to offer in our CTE program. And it's so strong in certain community schools. But we just don't feel like, and we even had stakeholders tell us that maybe we don't tell our story good. So we certainly feel like we can improve communications, adds to our community, to our parents, to our students, and all stakeholders, to help them understand how CTE at the high school level can, and help them build where it's going to go through high school, through certain community college, four-year schools, where the career path it is the next year. And finally, the fourth thing there is credential attainment rate. You know, we, we were seventh in the state in 2022, 2023 in credential attainment rate. And that was with a rate of about 59% already. We put the data already from this pack here, we, exactly where we'll fall. But I don't see why, can't wait to get that rate up. We almost have it. But that's going to be a big thing with principals, myself, CTE leadership team, and CTE teachers as well. Let's, let's expand on middle school. I'm sorry, Dan, next slide.
Oh, I clicked when you went through all that. You want me to go back? Oh, sorry, did I miss it? Okay. I can click back. Okay, my bad. Okay. Hold on, I'll go back. All right, middle school.
Of the middle school slide, it has the four different.
Okay, got it. All right, I'm there.
One big thing that's going to happen for us board members this coming year is the implementation of Paxton Patterson Labs. And our middle schools are happy to say that we have that equipment delivered. We have the furniture there for those labs. Paxton Patterson is coming the week of July 7th, I'm sorry, July the 8th, to install those labs in all four middle schools. And we have, all four of those teachers are registered for professional development in Catawba County in late July. So I really hope, and I, I don't hope, I believe that it will be a highlight of yours when you visit our middle schools this year to see the implementation of those labs. We just think that's really going to give a shock and rearm to our curriculum in middle school CTE. The second thing with middle school, as required by state law now, this year we will be working to help all eighth graders develop career development plans before they go to high school. The next thing, we talked about CTSOs, but Skills USA competitions. There are a lot of Skills USA competitions that middle school kids can compete in. And we're going to meet with our teachers and see kind of where they fall and how we can give our students opportunities there. And then finally, we're going to ask you tonight for the, just to give us, just to give us the go-ahead to pursue a grant that can provide us with a middle school career development coordinator. We only have two, two career development coordinators throughout the system. They're stretched pretty thin, but these career development plans may be a game changer. And we feel like if we could secure a grant, that may be something that could really help us move us with. All right, Dan, if you want to go to the next slide?
Okay.
We can skip that one. I think I talked about that, the next slide. And just, and I'll say this about CTSOs before we move on. In a perfect world, every middle and high school in certain community schools would have a PSA associated with all of, of our program. That's, that's, I would say, has a high participation rate in doing great things. We've made some real strides towards that. We've got more work to do, so that, that's going to be a, a major emphasis for us. Next slide. Let's talk communications. There's some things that we've done, some things that we're going to do. I think for, we talked a little bit about maybe, we even had business partners tell us that we don't, maybe don't exactly tell people our story well. Or that our parents and our students don't really know what, what's there. So our messaging that CTE is strong in Suri County, we've got to do a better job getting that out there. If you think about pathways, and I believe, for students, one of the most impressive things we've already done is the CTE career and college catalog. That resource is there, and now we've got to use that, put that to use. You're going to see some exciting video launch, some videos that we launched that are associated with each of our pathways that will, I think, will make you proud. I think it's fantastic work for us. Uh, all of our middle school kids are going to, uh, go through a lesson plan that helps them to understand how to use that career and college ready catalog. And then, uh, just the, you know, another thing that we've got to get back, correct, helping teachers and grow teachers is summer conference. It's a, uh, it's, it's held each year in Winston Salem, it's a statewide conference, and we want to increase the number of our teachers attending that conference. Okay, I'll move on to credentials, Dan, you with me?
I'm with you. I'm on the graph.
All right. All right, again, we want to increase our credential attainment to seventy-five percent. You can see raw data there in some of our program areas where we have, uh, where, where we have achieved credentials in the past. Uh, we're doing really well, you know, we see some gaps, it's just like with, with, uh, any test scores or whatever. You see certain schools have certain areas of strengths, certain areas that they can work on a bit better. Uh, for my office as CTE director, I'm going to do a better job helping principals and CTE teachers understand where those, where those strengths are, and then also where the weaknesses are as we move forward. Again, I would like to see us be, uh, be a, which I think we already are, a leader in the state in this area, but I think we can even do better. And again, golf been there when we have, uh, had these prize patrols where we recognize students. For a lot of students, it's a big deal to receive these credentials while they're in high school. Uh, we, we have some ongoing goals for CTE. Uh, you know, we constantly evaluate our current, uh, facilities and equipment. Uh, you know, we even want, we've even thought about business and industry coming in. For example, in our trade forces to, to help us with, uh, evaluating, you know, where we are with equipment, those type things. Uh, we want to continue to celebrate teacher and students' success. Uh, we are going to ask high school school improvement plans, uh, to have goals to increase CTSO offers, offerings, and the credential attainment rate at their school. And then we're going to ask principals to, to have CTE teachers to say, okay, how does my program fit into the overall credential attainment rate? Or how can my program help us with increased participation in CTSOs? Uh, one thing that our business advisory council told us last summer, uh, the last, during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year was, listen, we want you all to come to our, out into our businesses as much as you can, and we want to come into your schools as much as we can. So we challenged every CTE teacher to take kids on a field trip at least once a semester and to bring guest teachers in as often as they can. Uh, we saw a spike in that, I'll add the data for you right now. Uh, but we want to continue to make sure that our students are visiting and understanding what local business and industry has to offer in Surrey County. Uh, we want to continue to strengthen those, uh, partnerships with Surrey Community College. And, uh, and then, of course, we feel like it's a real, you know, one of the biggest wins we had this year was we took CTE teachers on required workdays, and we took them out and we did professional development to them that was based purely on CTE and the things that they teach. And part of that was taking them out in the local business and letting them see how their programming fits with, uh, local business and industry. Uh, we got a lot of positive feedback. So again, the next slide, I asked tonight that you approve our local plan, our local application, so that I could, can submit that to the state. Uh, we also asked, we would like to, uh, the Paxton Patterson Labs, our whole government, direct story, career decisions, classrooms, and we just feel strongly that that's a course that all middle school students would need to complete. We would love for you to appro, approve, that is a required course for all middle school students. And then a fourth, we approve, we'll seek funding for those, the career development coordinator.
Neil, the expansion grant is, is that from the state? Is that the CTE?
It's from the state.
Okay.
It's from the state, it's from DPI.
Okay.
What's the deadline on that grant, Neil?
Uh, I, I think it's July thirty-first.
We got to the end of July. We would write, per board approval, we would write, we would write it, we're going to write it.
Hold on just a second, I can give you a, I can give you a firm date on that, because I think I still have the email in my inbox.
While he's looking for that, help me, what is four S one?
What slide?
It's in the application.
Oh, in the application, okay. What is four S one in the application?
Hold on just a second. Um.
The state goal for four S one.
On the performance indicators for, um, for CTE. Hold on just a second, and I'll tell you what they are, I don't have them memorized, because there's a lot of them.
That's okay, it's, it's a performance indicator, so, okay.
You have to address every single indicator in that application.
So for example, one of the, in CTE, one of their performance indicators, that students that take CTE classes score proficient in Math One.
Right.
Or in English Two.
Mm-hmm.
Which in most cases, they're taking them after the CTE, or the CTE class they're taking after that class. I don't know how we're supposed to. Anyway, it's not been a fair assessment.
Exactly, or EOC.
They've got to reach levels, proficiency levels four or five by the end of grade ten on the English Two EOC.
Right. And that's basically a, a B plus to A plus, if you're four or five, on, out of the zero or one to five scale.
Or is that talking about the level four or five, which is correct?
Level four or five?
Yeah.
Yeah, like, when they say proficiency, like, for example, two S one is academic proficiency in reading language charts. Well, what that translates to is not really proficiency, proficiency is level three. It's, uh, it's, it's, it's the percentage of your CTE concentrators that make a four or a five.
Which is, you can't make it higher than a five, it's like off the chart.
So four S one, I see what you're saying now, there's two S one, three S, so four S one is non-traditional program concentration.
Yes.
Got you.
And, Mr. Led, so that's, that's, how many males are we enrolling in health sciences or? How many females do we have that are signing up and taking our construction, or your construction masonry course?
I, I follow you, yeah.
Okay.
You were looking at the date of the application for.
August sixteenth, it's about two and a half weeks old, so it's August sixteenth.
But if, if we're going to, um, look for a middle school CDC, and school starts on the eighth of August, August sixteenth is not helping as much as, unless we're willing to fund it until we get. Because that's what we're looking at, applying for the grant for, right, Neil?
It is, uh, in, in our, our, our months of employment this year, uh, CTE staffing is funded by months of employment. For example, in the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year, we had, we were allotted three hundred and eighty-seven months of employment. Okay, that allowed us to, uh, that allowed us to pay all of our in CTE, uh, CTE teachers, plus our two career development coordinators, plus our career curriculum and man, and management instructional coordinator, plus that, that allows you to pay your high school ag teachers twelve months. That three hundred and eighty-seven was perfect on the dot. We have three hundred and eighty-three months this year. Okay, now we've been able to make a cut or two here there, in, in, uh, over the summer, but it would be a little bit of a puzzle to put together if we were able to do it.
Neil, so the, the three hundred and eighty-three months that we were allotted, it's on page sixty of your application, that's what we're currently getting, not what we're asking for again?
Right, that's what we're currently getting.
Next year.
Next year.
Okay.
So what's the request? Will be a position for next year.
For more hours?
For get a new position, yeah. It will basically allow us to fund that position for ten months.
Yes.
To the state.
But is this also allowing us to ask for more months allotment?
Well, what, what, Dr. Reeves, if we, if we, if we hired a CDC, right man, we would be, our CTE total months of employment would be three hundred and eighty-seven months. So we would be four months short.
So we're short.
Right, I understand, I'm, take, take that position out of it. Is this application for the whole CTE program, and are we asking to get allotted more months than what we're currently getting so we can add more programs?
Can't ask, they, they just allocate what you got, based on ADM.
So they allocate, they allocate your months of employment, then they ask you, how are you going to, what's your plan?
I follow you now.
What program, I mean, why don't we not do something on, I don't know, marine something? Well, we don't do it because we're not at the coast.
I got you.
If you, if you took a school system at the coast, their CTE plan would probably mirror a business and industry of that region. And the reason our business advisory council is so important to us is we're trying to really tailor our programs to area needs, so that our kids are, are getting exposure to agriculture, to construction, masonry, horticulture, things that are really relevant here in Surrey County, advanced manufacturing, so they can get a job, go to Surrey Community College. It doesn't make sense for us to kind of be out here in, on one stratosphere when really the, the business and industry is in another. So we need to be aligned. That's, so what he's asking on number one, CTE plan, that's our local plan, that's how we're using those three hundred and eighty-three months. So that's the first thing he's asking for approval for. The second thing is exploring career decisions as a middle school course for all students. That's using your Paxton Patterson Labs. And then the third is approval to seek a middle school CDC. That's, that's, that's just a separate grant that the DPI is hopefully going to have an expansion grant.
Is it an expansion grant?
Is it for sure, because it's gone back and forth the last four years?
We applied last year and didn't get it right, Neil.
Career man, we, we were told that, um, the only folks who would get it were folks who had had it in the past. But we got the email again from Jacqueline Wyatt from DPI a couple of weeks ago, saying it's open again, so I'm hopeful.
So it sounds like three ways we could fund that is get a bit more months of employment, which is going to be based on ADM, we can't do that. We can fund it out of our own budget, or we can get that expansion.
Four months, yeah, we would only need four months out of our own budget.
Four months to be able to, okay.
Or you could cut a CTE program and use, use those months of employment in your CTE plan.
I don't like that.
I don't think you want to do that, and we don't have that on the table.
I'm going to make a motion for you, Mike, yeah? I, I will make a motion that we approve the local plan. I went through it and then dissected it, and understood it the best I could, and it's seventy-two things I have to make.
Don't you love CTE, baby?
I've read the thing for twenty years, and I'm still trying to. I like it. The only thing I do, I want to see us, and I think we will, as we evolve, have more agriculture certifications. Uh, I'd like to see us do that, but I think with our increased focus on starting kids younger in middle school and CTE, I've had a lot of staff come up and tell me that that is a definite need. So I'm going to make a motion, approve the plan, Paxton Patterson, I was in love with it. Uh, do that and make it a required, uh, explore career decisions be a required course for all the students. And also approve the application for a grant to fund a CDC. In the middle school. In middle school. That's a long. That's a big list. You got all that?
No, but I'll listen to it later.
Prove everything that's on there.
It's on the, it's on the last slide, yes.
Just write yes.
Yeah. Okay. I made that motion. All right, so we have a motion to approve the three parts that Mr. Atkins was asking, CTE plan, career exploration, or career, exploring career explorations in CDC middle schools. We have a second.
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Wood. All right, uh, as part of the discussion, real quick, as, I was a CDC at North Surrey, that also handled two middle schools. And if we're going to add this requirement on to them, I don't see any way that, that Julie and, and, what can I?
Missy Burner, Missy.
Can do that and do what they're doing at the high school, so I think we have to. And I, my opinion would be, yes, we've got to do that. And plus, it helps with the Paxton Patterson also, because it's career exploration. I think that is so instrumental that if we have to fund the extra four months, luckily I would be willing to make a motion to do that. So do we, are we at a point?
But we have first.
Yeah, let's, let's, that's right, let's go back, it is. All right, so we have a motion in the session, we have any further discussions about the motion for these three?
We might have to.
All right, all those in favor of the motion to approve those three, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Thank you. So, so the issue, and you're not going to get any disagreement from me out of, because I know how important it is. Um, is that something you want to pursue, or you want to think about it for two weeks? Because if we're going to do this, we need to get an application out there, process started. And because it's a coordinator, you might have some CTE teachers that might be interested in it, which means you need to fill that seat for the coming year of CTE.
And we, and we lost those, uh, four months, we had three eighty-seven last year, right?
You had three eighty-seven last year, right?
ADM went down.
Yes.
ADM.
Yeah, ADM.
Yeah, ADM's gone up, so is it a lagging year, how they do the ADM?
They want to know why the months of employment went down.
It's a formula, and it's based on ADM. Now, I, I don't know, it's, you know, I can't tell you the exact formula, but it's, it's based on ADM. For example, when I first became the CTE director, we were getting around four hundred and two, four hundred and three months. So we basically then cut a couple of positions over the last five years in months of employment, we say.
And that was probably seventy-two hundred or so on ADM. So we're going to penalize it, so it makes good sense.
Yeah, sounds like it.
It does, it does.
What is the estimated cost of those four months?
Estimated cost of the four months?
I said, bro.
Uh, this is, I, I know, it's going to be around thirty thousand dollars.
For four months?
We, we converted, we had some months this year that we converted to funds, because we had some teachers that had extended absences. And it's around, you know, a month of employment's worth somewhere around seventy thousand.
Twenty, thirty thousand.
Does it include benefits and all?
Do benefits, that goes.
Neil, is there any information of any language about, if there's an existing CDC, will this grant pay for it, or does it have to be a brand-new position?
Well, what it has to be, Dr. Reeves, the grant is specific. You have to hire personnel with this grant, and it has to expand your programming to middle school students. So, you know, we, you know, we had another school assistant close to us that had a, had this grant for years, and they were able to employ the person just in middle school.
My concern is if we, if we fund it, then we're not expanding, because it's something we've already created. I, I just don't want it to make us ineligible.
If we, Neil always said, if we do it, if we do it now, then we can't expand it, right? Because we've already got it placed.
Unless you have a note. Can we, can we hold it till?
Yeah, I think that's what, what he'd like to do, his motion, hold it to.
Hold it for two weeks, do a little research.
But I sure would like.
Did you hear that? Neil?
I did, and I think I agree, I agree with that, I agree with that, um, decision, I think that's wise.
Having, knowing though, that if we wait until after school starts, you just shrink your pool of those who might want to apply for it, maybe. And then you, then you cause a problem for that person that moves out of another CDC or CTE. Anyway, good, good point, I think that's what we ought to do, just wait until the next meeting and discuss it.
Definitely discuss it the next meeting.
You want us to add us back on the board, Jim, that's a good thing.
I hope so.
We're talking about the work session.
No, I think we need to put on the business meeting, the first of July.
The first, July first, Neil.
I think it gets us to.
Any other questions for Mr. Atkins?
Thank you, Neil.
Hey, thanks for meeting virtually, I appreciate it.
Yeah, have a good time, be careful.
Enjoy your.
Enjoy that grand baby.
He's going to tell him his yard needs to be.
His yard needs to be.
Oh, I'm going to text him that, I'm going to say, I'm going to say, I'll cut you off.
We're making, we're making him work on his vacation, and you weren't naming his chain like that, I believe it a little bit. He's working on his.
Telling kids and telling this to be good.
No, what you need to do is text him and say the clerk is going to mow his yard while he's gone, and he'll see what he thinks about that.
Come home, mow your yard.
Who?
No, bring him in.
No, ask her to change that, to say, tell her the clerk's going to mow his yard while he's gone.
Bring him down, he's bringing down the man.
Wouldn't that work? Yeah, all right, let's get back on track. All right, Shoals Elementary School Playground renovation project. I know we heard a little about this last time, but some more, a lot more detail now. Okay, all right.
Can you go?
Let's take, okay, can you have a seat for a second, let us have a two-minute break to go to the bathroom, we've been at this almost two hours, so. We're getting old. Not getting old, it's already there. How y'all going to make it through these things, man?
How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Thank you for coming, Neil. Raising all this money for the playground.
Working hard.
I should have brought.
The only problem is got to find that other forty thousand dollars.
Y'all ready to know the forty thousand?
Fine, we're upstate.
I need my forty thousand.
Get this wall mounted out and move back a little bit this way.
Yeah.
Does it say who is that? Who's teaching who?
She keeps her fuck on.
I got a pair of things around.
Okay. All right. All yours for the presentation.
renovation proposal. This is Kristen Rebus. She is our, she's been on PTO, but she is our newly PTO president, and she has all the playground knowledge and information that you'll need to know. We shared this document with you, so I'm gonna turn it over to her, and she'll give you just an overview, and then if you have any questions for any of us, we are happy to answer them.
So this is my first time presenting. I don't really know exactly what to present or how, so I'll just kind of give you the overview. So we included some pictures of the current playground, and obviously needs to be upgraded. So right there, that picture that you actually have up there, that Google image, so that's kind of the overview of the school and the playground. And you can see on that, the bottom left-hand corner of the screen there, that's where our current kindergarten playground is. And then the current grade one through five playground is at the top of the screen, that eighty-eight by thirty-six kind of box you see at the top of the screen. And.
And the pre-K, that won't change, the one to the left?
The pre-K will not change. That was, I think, recently upgraded.
On the right.
Oh, yeah.
There you go. Ooh, it's gonna be big.
So the current playground that you can see at the top of the page, that's the one through five. Really long, narrow playground, outdated equipment, lots of drainage issues. And so when we met, you know, a couple of times talking about the project, we all agreed that moving the playground from its current, I'm sorry, the grade one through five playground, moving that from its current location to that empty asphalt on the left of the screen would probably be more ideal. It's a flat, large area that's really kind of unused currently. The asphalt to the right of the screen is where our basketball hoops are and everything, and the kids do use that space a lot. One of the requests, when we were talking about this project, was from our kindergarten teachers. That space for the current playground is pretty long and narrow also, and it has, I have a picture included there as well, a tall gate, or a tall fence and brick fence, and so it kind of keeps the kids in a small space. And there's, I think, like anywhere from forty to fifty kids out there at any given point in time, that's the kindergarten playground right now. So the kindergarten teachers requested, when we do renovate, that we add some more space to the kindergarten playground. So kind of taking all of that into consideration, you know, we've talked to a couple of different people, and we all agree that ideally it would be great to add some space to that kindergarten playground. And so the current measurements for that space is ninety foot by thirty foot roughly. So, and the new proposed location for the grades one through five space is about ninety foot by eighty-four foot. So we, if we take away, say, twenty feet off of the kindergarten, or I'm sorry, the big kid space, that gives the kindergarten a new dimension of ninety foot by about fifty foot, and still gives about ninety foot by about sixty-five foot for the grades one through five playground. One of the requests also from our teachers, the swings apparently are the hot commodity for our playground. We have twelve there currently. That doesn't meet current commercial playground code, because we have, I think, three bays, four swings per bay. The current code is two swings per bay. So if we wanted to keep the twelve swings for the playground that we currently have, it needed a new space. It wouldn't fit on that blacktop. So the proposal is to kind of create its own space where the current playground is, but moving it away from where the drainage issues are. The drainage issues are on that far back left corner. But that would be, you know, we've raised a significant amount of money this year, we're about sixty-seven thousand dollars. We have a couple more donations coming in this summer. But, and we met with a couple of different companies. The company that we have decided to use is a company out of Greensboro. They make commercial playground equipment. They've done numerous schools, neighborhood playgrounds, and we've picked out some equipment for the space. And with the money that we've raised so far, we kind of discussed doing this in two phases. The first phase would be, oh, and actually before we get into that, one of the biggest issues is obviously the demolition of all of this. Has a very costly task, because A, we have to remove asphalt, obviously the old equipment. And so there's a local demolition company or a grading company who actually was a former student of Shoals years ago, played on the equipment there. And he's donating his demolition to our project. So he's going to do the demo, the removal of all of the current equipment, the removal of the asphalt from that new grades one through five space. He's gonna grade the project according to appropriate erosion control. I think it's something like ten, down ten foot for every, or down one inch for every ten foot, or something along those lines. And the only part of that from a cost standpoint, he's willing to donate all of that just as a way to give back to the community. He's a local business owner. But he does subcontract out for the removal, and the two companies that he uses, you know, they will actually have to charge us some, because it's gonna be about twenty-five truckloads to remove everything. But the companies that he typically uses has also agreed to donate a portion of their labor, anywhere from twenty-five to fifty percent of that. But part of our costs in the beginning will obviously be the demo of the project. And so the phase one that we've kind of talked about is removing the gate and fence, that brick and kind of wrought iron gate around the kindergarten space, bringing, and I think there's also cement there as well, removing all the equipment from there, and then obviously removing all the current equipment and asphalt. The kindergarten space, you know, we will push out another twenty foot or so, give them some more space. And just from an ease of, you know, installation and everything, we decided to complete the whole kindergarten space. So we picked out three different pieces of equipment, the borders, the mulch, all that for the kindergarten space. And so we would final, like finish the kindergarten space first, and that estimated cost with those three pieces and all the border that goes with it would be about twenty-eight thousand dollars. With what we have left, we are gonna do a portion of the grades one through five playground. That would buy us kind of one of those big, large playsets that would be kind of in the middle of the area. But that's such a big space that it would actually allow, we can still continue to fundraise and expand and add more freestanding pieces of equipment as we've, as we're able to fundraise for more money. And then probably phase two would also be addition of swings in that back space there. So we would get everything kind of down to the, you know, the ground zero, bring everything, demo everything, get it all prepped and ready to go. We would finish the kindergarten space, you know, do the kindergarten, the grade one through five space, which is that Huntsville kind of playset right there. And then that would be about our total budget. We actually would probably end up being a slightly over budget, but with our incoming donations this summer, I think we would be able to pay for all of that. And then as we continue to fundraise throughout the rest of the school year, we would hopefully add on our swings, which would be easy to access because it's the back space, but it would be ready to go. And then I think that would be, and then any other freestanding, you know, probably climbers or, you know, any other kind of functional things, we would add to that big kid grade one through five space. We haven't picked the actual freestanding pieces yet, but since we didn't have the money for it, that's why we didn't pick out those pieces of equipment yet. So on that second page where we kind of have everything broken down, so our demolition costs, we estimate to be about seven thousand dollars at the most. Likely, it would probably be closer to about one to two thousand. A, if we reuse some of the current mulch that we have, that minimizes how much is removed, or like how much mulch we'll have to remove. And then between the two hauling companies donating some of their labor, we estimate seven thousand dollars would be the max, maybe closer to one to two thousand. The equipment that we picked out, the border for those two spaces, not including the border for the swings, because we wouldn't be doing that phase yet, but the border for those spaces would be roughly about sixty-nine thousand dollars. So again, a little bit over what we currently have, but as we continue to fundraise and have more donations coming in, I think that we would meet that goal pretty easily. One of the questions that we have asked is if Surrey County School Maintenance would help us with the installation of the playset and the playground, as well as help to provide new mulch. You know, the mulch that we have is not a lot, and we could reuse as much of it as we can, but we would still need additional mulch to bring it to, I guess, the current fall regulations.
So their quoting doesn't have any installation equipment?
That is, that is just equipment, yes. Now, I've included a bunch of estimates, and I think some of them may have, yeah, like for instance, the estimate on where it's got the ditch planes for the, this is the kindergarten estimate. So the first estimate for backyard paradise, it's got ditch planes, Poseidon's hideout, double row, pebble bridge. At the bottom left-hand corner, you can see on their estimate, and says for reference on this quote, installation would be an additional ten thousand dollars. So by Surrey County Schools helping with installation, that saves us tens of thousands of dollars that we can put towards equipment. And, you know, we've been working really hard to fundraise this money, and I think, you know, the kids would be really excited to see any kind of progress that we can make.
So historically, maintenance has done the installation of playgrounds, correct?
They do a lot of this. The mulch you're talking about, is that right?
No, that's the wood mulch. Yeah, rubber mulch. I've requested estimates for that. It is, I've been told, quote, extremely expensive. However, rubber mulch is beneficial because it doesn't need to be replaced every year. And I know every year, a lot of the mulch has to be kind of topped off on the playgrounds. We don't have it in our budget right now. That could be something that we do down the road, hopefully.
Parents, you'll find out. We tried this at Dobson Elementary several years ago.
Oh, rubber.
And just so happened, my son Elliot was actually in school at Dobson whenever that happened, and the kids bring that stuff home in their shoes and socks and pockets, and then the parents throw that stuff in the dryer and turn the dryer on. You can imagine what the inside of your dryer looks like after it's heated up that rubber. So I wouldn't recommend rubber, just for that simple fact. It was hard to keep it in, too. It would float out. But now Dobson, that did have a pretty severe slope to the back corner there, kind of like you've got now.
Kind of like we have currently.
So, but that's just my two cents words.
So you're asking us to approve what you've raised so far for first phase?
Yes, we'd like to get started on phase one if we could, and for us to be able to use certain kinds of maintenance for installation and mulch.
So I guess, is this something you think could be done? We're talking ten to eighteen weeks look like for your estimate. Is that something y'all got the time to do with your other schedule of maintenance? No pressure, because you're sitting beside your.
Yeah, well, regardless of when it starts, it's gonna be piecemeal. There's not a whole lot we can do right now to ball this rolling, because they'll be without a playground.
Right.
So once the equipment gets here and we get all this tightened up, and get the accurate budget, the drawings, you know, but we just have to do it piecemeal. We just can't jump on it, take everybody down there and work two or three weeks, it's just done.
Right.
And historically, we've worked on there two, here and there, whenever we can, in between rain and emergencies.
And twenty schools to take care of.
Mount Park to four weeks to relocate theirs, and that's taking up the old equipment, moving it up to the new site, prepping it, putting it in, and everything was about a four-week process. And that was like Doug said, just the guys just working on it as we had time, and, you know, other projects freed them up to where they could go and spend a day there or whatever.
And another, the call, I do the grading and hauling, would like to do it all at one time, but I'm a little leery about, you know, let's dig it all up and then, well, three, five doesn't have any work, their playground's gone until we can get the money to do the rest.
Well, they would have.
Way to leave that and do the.
They would have a playground.
It just wouldn't be complete. They'd have, yeah, the blacktop would be pulled up, but the grades one through five would have that piece that is called the Huntsville.
Yeah.
It's a pretty large piece. It holds anywhere, I think, I wanna say from like thirty-six to forty-two kids at a time.
And the swings could stay like they are until you have the money to do the.
So I spoke to the gentleman that does the grading and the demo, and he said he could do that, it would just be more expensive. It would be easiest for him to come in and level everything at one time.
Then you'd have no swings until.
Correct, we wouldn't. And we talked about that as a group, and it sounded like the newness of the grades one through five playset would be enough to kind of hold the kids over. Typically, our fall fundraising, we've been able to fundraise about nine thousand dollars in the last, I think, two years with our fall fundraisers. Well, just for one fundraiser. And so the thought is that with our fall fundraiser, with seeing a new playground, you know, even if it's, I don't know, from an availability standpoint, probably might not start until the fall or later. But if we had, you know, we have two D renderings in color that would be customized to our school colors, and we have like pictures blown up and kind of posted at the school and on our social media and kind of build excitement about it. And so we were hoping that in the fall, we could fundraise enough to at minimum add the swings to our playground. I think that was about.
Like I said earlier, that's gonna be the attraction. Any playground you ever go to, the swings are where the kids go first.
We hear that, yeah.
Yeah, so, and I got a bunch of kids, they do the same thing, so, yeah, that's, that would be my concern, is the swings not being there. I'm not saying that you shouldn't do it, I'm just saying that would be my.
And we looked, or we discussed a lot of options, but cost-wise, to get the two larger pieces, we weren't able to do the swings to, I think, like what, ten, twelve? It was crazy, and it's just the swings were. So we looked at different options, but we couldn't get a big set for each playground and swings at the same time.
Yeah, we chose from a cost standpoint, or from a, well, from an access standpoint, the kindergarten seems like it would be easier. It's the closest to the school. You have to get through the grades one through five playground to do that space, and so we figured, let's complete that first. It also has, you know, smaller equipment, less expensive equipment, so complete that, put the money towards that, and then it's done. We don't have to touch it. The grades one through five space, we talked about either doing the swing set or maybe a really small kind of playset so that you could do both. And the playground committee, which included a bunch of the teachers, they all agreed that the swings could wait. The kids would be excited to do the playset, have that space, and that, you know, especially with our fall fundraising in the past, we could probably get those swings. get those swings pretty much clean.
Several things. The border that's around the kindergarten, the brick and rail, will it go back, or is there a fence being installed, or are we going to have an escape? I mean, we're going to put the extended playground, is it going to be put back so that the kids ain't escaping around?
Or is that.
Do we have that issue?
That's one of the questions that I had, and Doug and I had. Are you talking about removing the entire brick enclosure or just the front side that faces the asphalt?
We talked about just the front part that faces the asphalt, but then we didn't know how, you know, we talked about maybe putting chain link fence up to kind of fix that, but ultimately, we didn't think that that would, from an aesthetic standpoint, that that would work. And so we think also for removing the current kindergarten cement and everything, we just, we're going to take the whole fence down. We were going to use the border, and again, this was at the recommendation of the teachers, we were going to use just the standard border that's there as a way to define the space for the children. And then if, ultimately, if that didn't work, then we could install a chain link fence around the space.
I have a concern with that one, just because of the escape issue that we've seen before.
Right, with the gate, with the fences up now, there's no, there's nothing blocking them from running out.
Oh.
There's, there's big, I mean, there's big entryways, there's nothing, there's not a gate, there's nothing that closes them.
They come back up to the school, they're on the sidewalk to get out.
It's right there, it's like everything's right there, yeah, there's nothing.
That's an aesthetic thing.
That, yes.
Yeah.
And expensive.
Expensive, yes.
Well, that's another question that I thought, if you don't mind me asking, but I know a couple of years ago, when I was down at Shoals, looking at the drainage issue that we had in the kindergarten playground at the time, there was three kindergarten classes all out there at the same time using this playground.
Mm-hmm.
Because I actually spoke to the teachers about two or three different issues that they had and some options and things like that. So I guess my question is, I hate to see this structure that's there now go away because it is a very beautiful, solid, pretty structure. Has anybody considered alternating your kindergarten classes to utilize the playground separately? In other words, instead of all, I know now you're the two classes, I think you said. Have you thought about sending one class out there to play on this area, and then when they go in, the second class comes out and plays on it, so it's not as crowded, and you could still replace the equipment that you're talking about, but you wouldn't have to change the size of the playground itself. You could take up that area that's kind of got the rubber mats and the concrete, you could remove that and expand and have just one big mulched, safe playground area within the walls of what you've already got, I guess, that's my, that's my question. Instead of having to demo it, just.
Here's essentially just gaining 20 foot.
Change a little bit of scheduling, if that would be.
Yes, they would change it from 90 by 30 to about 90 by 50.
To 20 by 90. Well, I think when we went, when we went down, our concern was losing that fence, because that looks so nice. We talked about it. So it's, and the drainage problem's inside that fence now, right? Does that have to be corrected, too?
Well, we added, we added a drain in the center, it's kind of like a French drain, it's just a, we dug a pit and put gravel in it and then piped it out, and that seems to have worked, to my knowledge. I mean, I haven't heard anything since.
See the new equipment handicapped access?
So we had planned on ADA ramps for both of the spaces. Again, the ramps are kind of latched directly into the border. If we do keep the, we did not actually include an ADA ramp for the swings because we didn't have an ADA swing, but that's something that could always be added at a later date. I know the current grade one through five playground does have a ramp, our kindergarten does not.
That would just be an ask of mine, in the future, when you're looking at your swings to look at, and I'd like to see all the schools do that. They have a wheelchair, wheelchair accessible swing.
And how does a child that needs that, that help, how do they access these? Are there pieces of equipment they can enjoy, you know, so not just a ramp into out? I know they're more expensive, but I'd say something, I would consider like a hundred or two.
I'm pretty sure that, I'd have to double check, but I'm pretty sure that the Huntsville and then the ditch planes, which is the name of the kindergarten playset, I think both of those are ADA compatible. We just did not pick an ADA swing off of that, but that's something that's definitely able to be added.
I would say ADA swings would actually roll the entire swing, or wheelchair it onto it.
Yeah.
Entire platform which swing helps and parts go.
Yeah.
So with the drainage issue that you have at the lower end of the long playground that I'm looking at right now, and you dig up everything and wait along, if, I don't know how long we're talking about waiting, but are we going to have to worry about wash and mud and that kind of thing?
Well, I'm not sure what, what the gentleman's plan is as far as that area, but.
He was planning for erosion control.
I would think that, you know, you could remove the bordering and the mulch and what few pieces of equipment that are there, and probably a couple of tandem loads of dirt to fill that space back up and then just seat it and mat it maybe, and it would be fine.
Okay.
And that's what.
I don't know whether we should talk about silt fences or.
I don't, I don't think that would be necessary unless he's talking about, you know, taking down the blacktop. I assume he's just going to remove the blacktop itself and what little bit of gravel is under it, which is probably four inches, which will make, will make all that back up with your safety zone mulch, you know, because it's going to be 12 inches.
Gotcha.
So.
12 inches of mulch?
Yeah, that's what's required.
The stag rigs on the playground, you can't believe.
You have to add some tracks.
So are y'all, are y'all, are y'all.
Well, yeah, I just want to make sure, we used procedures today, I do want to make sure that we're all on the same page, the contractor is on the same page. You know, if you read through this on the back page, there's some items about extra, maybe extra building for fuel hauling. Also make sure it's all done. Also make sure the board knows there is a budgetary impact on that department of about $16,000 for mulch and concrete, things like that, just from what we can see about the pictures.
They include the placement of the.
That's just mulch and concrete, and it's just the set of poles and. The mulch, believe it or not, it's, it's not like mulch you go to the holes and snow ground, mulch is treated, it's regulation mulch for kids, and it's $2,300 a load, and it's going to take about six loads, six to seven loads.
That big as a load? Like on y'all's.
Track travel.
Hundred cubic yards.
Yeah.
What's that, how many loads?
It's about six, at least.
Six tractor.
With all these questions, I don't want it to diminish the appreciation of.
They've done a great job.
Of fundraising.
Yes.
This is a big project.
It is. We just don't want to get into it and start having surprises. So since we just got this, and we got plenty of time, we can, you know, meet back on site, go over every little thing we need to. The board needs to make a decision about whether, what we want to do about the brick.
Well, I think, yeah, we do have time, but I think our point, we're kind of, we have the money, $67,000, we kind of, we want to do a thing, you know, we've raised all this money and people, we don't want people to be like, what are you going to do? You know, where's the money? We, we do want to get something started as quick as possible.
And especially with a lead time of 10 to 18 weeks.
Right, to order the.
Yeah, the earlier we can order the equipment, then the sooner it can come in.
Yeah, the ordered equipment is paramount. But as far as tired asphalt, start digging up things, I mean, it's going to, it's going to render a part of your space useless if you start taking up equipment, start demo and brick, you're going to lose your playground.
Do you know where he was planning to take the spoils, once he like takes the asphalt and gravel up? Does he have a place off-site he was going to take that to?
Yes, yeah, he has somebody, he said that was going to take the asphalt specifically, and then I think the metal structures, he was going to scrap unless the school system wanted to keep them for any reason. And then I think there's like some plastic equipment and stuff that he was just going to, I guess, bring with landfill.
Okay, one other question, and I'll be quiet. So I want to make sure I understand, you're planning to leave the current one through five playground intact while you are constructing the new one? Is that the plan?
That was not the plan.
Then where are those kids, like, if he's going to demo this, where are those kids going to play for 10, possibly 10 weeks or 18 weeks?
So we have the blacktop that's not going to be touched out there.
And we weren't, we weren't going to demo it until the equipment was in and until the school system was available to help install. He said he could, he's available to whenever.
So this isn't an immediate summer project? Because that was my concern when we started talking about it, because.
I thought you were ready to go. I thought you were ready to.
No, we haven't ordered anything because.
Well, I'm talking about the demo part, I thought you was ready to.
We are.
Proceed with.
We are, once we get, yeah. But he wasn't going to do it until, until everything was available, you guys were available.
Delivered here.
Everything was delivered, and, yeah.
Okay, well, that's about.
And then, and then he said his turnaround time, you know, he would be available within like one to two weeks, and hi- his estimation is about two days for his side of the project, between the removal of everything and then grading.
So is he willing to work on the weekend? Because it'd be kind of difficult for him to be there with heavy equipment, skid steers or whatever.
Kids will find their way to that equipment.
While he's trying to do that, you're going to have to be worried about keeping kids away from that area, so that, in my opinion, that needs to happen either a holiday or a weekend or something like that, where he's kind of got free run of the place.
And we, I mean, two or three days, we could make alternate recess adjustments, where they use the gym or what.
I'm not familiar with this guy, I'm sure he is top-notch, that I would want, you know, he's doing us a favor by volunteering and donating this, but I would want to vet it by our maintenance guys.
Yes, he has general liability information available.
We just need to get a copy of his insurance.
Yeah, yeah.
Make sure he's got the.
Well, not just insurance, but I mean, the abilities, because I don't want to go down there, tear it up, then we have to fix it. And I'm not, I'm not saying that's the case, I don't.
Understand.
I'm understanding, I'm with you.
I also think we need to add a temporary safety fence between the blacktop and the construction area, because you could have, you will have kids that are curious, you will have balls that roll from point A to point B, it's just, if there's a barrier, kids won't cross it, we hope, but I do think we need to think about some kind of temporary safety fence. Often, you know, we saw what they used at more Surrey when they did the canopy, something that was not very pretty, but it will sit there and keep kids away from it.
Anytime that we're doing some kind of little project like that, the kids will run up, you know, to the fence and want to watch us and stuff, and especially one of first and second graders or something.
You may have covered this, but is there any way to get some of this done before school starts back?
Probably not, just because of a, an equipment issue.
10 to 18 weeks.
10 to 18 weeks. Now, they, they have availability for what they call like quick ship items, but in order to customize it, like with our school colors, which, you know, we've, we waited so long to do this playground, we really want to make it best that it can be, and the quick ship items were like three to four weeks potentially, but again, based on availability, you know.
Probably it ain't.
We decided to go and customize stuff.
So my only concern is tearing down the, the brick now. I have a little bit of a concern with that, it's just, it's just there, it's not.
I think it's.
And.
Second thing.
And change your scheduling with the classes.
Because that's.
That you could put toward the other playground, which is going to serve more kids. That's the only way I look at it, is, you know, I was looking at the square footage, and your kindergarten playground is going to have just about as much square footage as your K, you know, your one through five, so, you know.
Kindergarten's 4,500 square feet, and K5 is 540 square feet.
So, it's just something to think about.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to be helpful and think about ways to save money and utilize what we've already got, and that is a very nice structure. So I'm not trying to change anybody's minds, or I'm just putting things out there that you can consider to possibly save, save money and be able to redirect that money in another direction, something that would be more beneficial. You might could get your swings now.
Well, the demo would be free of that space. The gentleman said he was, he would.
What's the seven?
That was just the hauling.
I thought it was all the 7,000.
That was just the hauling. So we might save some in removal of that.
So is the, the new fence in this quote?
Yeah, we were going to use the border, yeah, we were going to use border.
There's no fence, so there's no way to.
No fence, yeah. So we, yes, we.
So it'd just be open?
The potential for savings could be just from physically removing from, you know, that could be one to two dump trucks full of removal at $250 a dump truck.
Okay.
But he also told me that to get, now, we are able to get equipment in there because that space between the school and the fence is pretty wide, and you could get smaller, like skid steer kind of equipment in there, but the, there's cement that connects to that brick, and if we remove that cement, he, it's not a guarantee that it won't damage that fence. So that was a concern as well, from, from the grading.
Yeah, well, that's going to have a foot and under it and everything, because that's brick, so it's going to have probably an 18, 20, 12 to 18 inch foot and under it. I mean, it's going to be a pretty major excavation to get all that out. That's why I asked about the spoils, making sure that he has somewhere off-site, that he could take that to and fill a holler up somewhere with it, or dump it in a ditch or something.
Yeah, something was going to be left on site.
Here's one other thing that we need to be cognizant about, we're going to have to have access from that left-hand side of the school over to the, the blacktop that's going to remain. We'd be, we'd want to be up for trucks and things like that, so we're going to, we're going to need 10, 12 feet at the end of this playground, just for a corner of the travel.
To get to the.
We'll have this, I guess, once it's removed.
Are you talking about to get to this behind the.
We're talking about getting over here.
Okay.
See, right now, we just come in and drive across two blacktops, and, you know, we can get over here to do whatever we need to do, or if we need it someday, we're going to have to resurface this probably, so you're going to be able, you're going to have to have access to get in here to it.
Okay.
Because you can't come this way because it's so steep.
Yeah.
We can push a little bit back and forth and as we move this and work with it, but it's just something also, just keep in the back of mind when we meet again to, to look at this.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion? Y'all can do this or not do it. What if you had Mr. Dixon or Mr. Groan or both, or whoever, come to the PTO meeting with you to talk, to relay some of this from, and see, that way when you're coming up with the ideas to say, as I'm telling you, that's a non-star, or, you know what I mean? If y'all, if you're willing to do that.
Yeah, I just wonder about committing yourself to doing something that you don't really know you're going to be able to do yet or not.
Yeah, like I said, you know, and they've done a great job in, in experiencing this.
And we came up several times with.
So we, once we got the, I would still love to see the plans.
Well, and I think you have great ideas or way you can sit down with the guy that's talking about doing it, you know, what exactly are you thinking? Can we do this? Can, you know, what are we going to need to do? Because right now, there's a little uncertainty, I think about, I've been in construction 30 years, there's always going to be one that's going to say, well, I thought you were doing it, and one say, I thought you were doing it, and then the owner has to come back and pay the difference.
Yeah, there needs to be some coordination, I'd say between maintenance and, and white construction, these people.
It's a little, it's, it's more entailed than you would think, talking about building this, the Robert, he's a pro at it, I mean, this, this stuff's got to be accurate. If you pour concrete and then pour stone meat, you got a problem.
And it's always going to be the other guy's fault.
Can you go back to the phases?
I'm just going to say too, for someone who isn't a presenter, you are phenomenal.
Thank you. The other thing, to that point, Drew Kane, who's the owner of this company, he was, well, like he said, I'm free and available to come, he actually wanted to come to this meeting, so he's happy to sit down, he's been to the site at least two times that I know of, looked at everything, took measurements, did all the things, and so he said he's happy.
That's kind of what we need to do.
Yeah.
We make it happen. We got plenty of time when this stuff gets here.
Yeah. Yeah, and he said he was really flexible, um, you know, I, I just think I, our community is really kind of all coming together to make this happen for our school.
Well, and it doesn't sound to me like there's any disagreement with the equipment. It's how you're going to make it, the, the construction.
All the steps.
Schedule work and how it's all going to fit together. I just wonder, is there a compromise maybe to help with some of the order of equipment without going out there and knowing exactly how it's going to be laid out? You said only one piece of equipment in the one or the, the, uh, one through five area, right?
For now, yes.
Talking for now, so maybe if that, if you could order that, knowing it's going to be installed, maybe not where yet, but how it would be installed. I'm just trying to come up with a way that we can get it started and still get these questions answered.
And show the community that we are.
Yeah.
Supportive of it and y'all been, you know, all these people's been giving money, hey, we're not just earning it for talent, we're trying, so order a piece of equipment.
So Ms. Rebo, on the kindergarten area.
Yes, sir.
So I'm, I'm looking back at phase one.
Okay.
Yep, just why, why do you need the additional space? What, what are you ordering to go in that kindergarten area?
So, to be honest, the pieces that we have picked out will fit in a ninety by thirty space. All three pieces. Um, the teachers who are out there, so we currently have, um, three kindergarten classes and I think it's about, about forty-five students, is that correct, out there at the same time?
It'll be like about thirty-five actually for your kids.
Yeah, so anywhere between, I guess, thirty-five and forty-five students out there at the same time and so the, the kindergarten teachers have asked, it just feels tight and cramped in that space and it would be nice if we're going to do this project to expand that space for them. And so that was just based on their request. But also, again, I think the space that they have, this is the kindergarten space, this is standing at the entrance. So you can see at the very top left of that screen, that last column, that's one of the entrances to the kindergarten and I, I took this standing at the other entrance of the kindergarten. And so there's that rubber mat on top of cement right there with a, there's a sandbox and to the right of that sandbox is kind of just a smaller plastic structure, like a freestanding that's sitting on top of this, the cement. And then there's that big kind of climbing, you know, piece of equipment in the middle and then right behind that, you can see there's kind of like an arch climbing, um, piece of equipment. And so the, the equipment that we've picked out would actually fit in this space. Again, if you kind of knock everything out, remove all the pieces of equipment that are there, um, you could have the playset essentially anywhere, have it on one side of the playground, have the two smaller pieces kind of in the middle. But again, just the, just as the, the kindergarten teachers requested, they just, it felt cramped with that many students out there, um, and they just asked to have a little bit more wiggle room.
Because you'd have to, to accommodate all the equipment that you like to have in there, you would still need to take out the concrete.
Yes.
They were right in the bottom picture.
Yes, and that was the concern, um, the owner of the demo company, his concern because it comes right up to the brick fence and so he said, you know, he, they would, they would do everything in their power to make sure that they didn't damage the fence, um, but I mean, this is a thirty-year-old structure, so.
It's all good.
That's what he was, he was talking about.
So, your thirty feet, is that thirty feet of mulch space that we're looking at or is that including this sidewalk?
Not including the sidewalk.
Thirty feet not including the sidewalk?
Correct.
Good. I'm just thinking fall zone. Because each piece of equipment is going to have a specific fall zone.
It does.
That it has to be clear around it, so I want to make sure that we're going to be able to fit that.
So the safety zone, if you look, I have that included here.
Yeah, it's on, on the quotes up there.
Yeah, if you scroll to the equipment and look for ditch planes, it should be at the top, keep going, yep. So the safety zone is at the bottom there, so thirty-four foot by twenty-five foot.
So we'd have to, that would be close, that one would.
Correct, it would be, it would be, but again, that piece, the piece of equipment isn't twenty-five foot wide, that's the safety zone.
Which you couldn't have the, you couldn't have the concrete there then, right? That sidewalk, you couldn't.
It's the space between them that, that you got to worry about. You got to have a six-foot fall zone all the way around each piece of equipment.
I'm assuming, I think that the safety zone is including the equipment and the fall zone.
It is, the safety zone is the equipment.
Yeah. Lowways.
Yes, and then I have the other safety zones as well, so the, the double row pebble bridge has a safety zone of nineteen, so twenty foot by say fifteen foot.
Yeah, the others are wearing good shape. We're good on all of them, I just wanted to make sure that we have the proper fall zone.
Nothing bad is, it'd be a pretty easy decision for me to retain the, uh, the railing and the brick. I think aesthetically it looks good, it's solid, but, uh, where the demolition cost is, is pretty much being given back in the project by the ones that's doing it. But if, if we had to pay for the demolition cost full stop, you know, it'd be an easier decision for me.
But right now, the only thing I'm saying is, is right now, you've got a way to contain those children. If you take it out and there's no new fence included in this, now those kids can, you know, they're kindergartners. Second or third graders, you know, I would think, uh, think differently, but with a kindergartner and, and I've been down there when those groups were out there on the playground and they're, they're running around everywhere, you know.
And it is open now on each end, but.
I'm just.
You got two classes, so you have a teacher sit at each end, so they are still contained.
And that's what they were doing when we were there, they were sitting at each end so it couldn't get out.
I'm good in any way that they, that you guys want to proceed, I'm just looking at the pros and cons of it, so.
That's tough. We want to, we're trying to figure out how to show support for it, we want to prove it, but we want to make sure we thought all this out. And I know Doug said you just got it today, you need to, need to look at it, look at it with the rep. If, if the, the guy that's selling you the stuff would come up and look at it with you, the grading company.
Doug, have you met with the rep?
Sir?
Have you met with the gentleman that Ms. Rebo's talking about?
Is it possible before our July meeting for you to meet with the rep and the PTO? Is it in your schedule?
It's on your schedule.
We have a PTO meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Twenty, yeah, we have a PTO meeting on Tuesday.
I mean, because I know your, your schedule's crazy right now.
Yeah, we can meet Tuesday as far as I know.
So you do have one Tuesday?
Well, we have a PTO meeting, um, not a playground committee meeting, uh, but I can certainly call the group together for that. Our PTO, you know, we open it for, for everybody, we just had a smaller.
They'd probably come if you talked a while, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
The, the committee or the PTO?
The committee.
Yeah, and, um, Drew Kane said he's available whenever, um, you know, he actually lives about five minutes from the school, so.
Is that Ricky's son?
Yes.
Maybe he could come to the PTO meeting and call.
I would suggest y'all do that and then come to us at the July meeting and first.
I'd love to meet with the PTO committee and the, and the contractor, just so this small group's on the same page and start calling on the shots.
Anytime you got ten people, there's going to be ten different pictures of what it's going to look like, who's going to do what? You better say, I'll go over, okay, you're going to do this, we'll do this.
And Doug, could you measure that? Could, could you basically lay out that kindergarten fall zones with those three pieces with the current brick wall and then without it? I mean, just, and then maybe come back to our board and report at the July first meeting and put it on the business meeting?
Is it enough time for you to meet with all them before our next meeting or do you need it at the next work session?
It's going to be, it's going to be, uh, it may happen, but it's, it's.
Because he's still got a lot.
Yeah, that'd be a month.
And you're going to have to dissect what you, the information you gain from their PTO and the contractor and the salesmen. I'll make a motion that you do that and we talk at the next work session.
Uh, the next will be the twenty-second of July.
So the question with the order, I sort of noticed the quotes on the good until about the seventeenth of July?
Yes.
Can you talk to him and find out if they would extend that? Because if we meet on the twenty-second, there's no way you can over about seventeen.
Um, yes, I can certainly do that, um, and just for clarity, so, um, I think Drew Kane is fairly readily available to talk. I, I'm sure that, and I, I can either connect you two and, and, or I can schedule something for all of us to meet, whatever is easiest for you, um, and I think the playground committee, I don't think that there would be any concern, I mean, I'm certain we could sit down with them and talk, but I think that they would be amenable to whatever is the recommendation. So from a scheduling standpoint, if that helps.
And I think what I'm hearing from the board here is everybody's a supporter, everybody wants to help you make it happen. It's just how the details happen, that we make sure nothing falls through. And then Doug in the left with, oh, wait a minute, I didn't know I was going to have to put another hundred and fifty in man hours. And we already know the cost is going to be sixteen thousand dollars to your department for the things we're going to have to do. So I, I think that's the only, I thought the parents understand, we want to help, we want to support.
And I will say with that gentleman, um, part of that, we're going to do part of that work anyways, we're going to replace that mulch.
Right.
We're probably going to dig some of it out, throw it out this year anyways, if we didn't do this project. So I'm just telling you, that sixteen thousand realistically, we're probably spending for that anyways and make it to the next year on this mulch.
And I, I think if you're a way to look at it, at least, and consider it's not the popular thing because they want to see change, they want to see big change. I hear a consensus of like to find a way to keep that brick and that fence if we can. I know that means you don't get the extra twenty feet, but I just, just took a pressure washer on that would be, do wonders to make it look better. But it's just, that's nice, just to, and to be able to contain them, I've got great kids, I know what happens when they're not supervised.
I'm all for it. Do you like them happy?
I'm all for it. Yeah, there you go. We made them and, and.
We're happy with whatever, whatever decision you guys make.
We're going to work it out, we're going to, we're going to work it out, we're just going to get, make sure everybody's on the same page.
That's right. And when y'all feel, when you feel good about it, I'm ready.
Said everybody feel good about that then, then bring you back at the next session and hopefully we'll be, have a lot better picture of what, what it's going to look like. And if there was any way to say tonight, yes, go over the equipment, I'd love to, but I, I don't know in good conscience we can do that not knowing exactly how it's going to lay out. Unless you were going to order the big one, you've got the money, it's.
From a freight standpoint, it's actually cheaper, we ordered all together, so we, we just ideally, we would just wait.
And I really don't like the idea of going out and grading and then not knowing what we're going to do and then we're stuck, then the kids don't have a place to play except that blacktop.
Yeah.
All right, does that do it for everybody then? Sound good?
We're going to add it to the July twenty-second work session.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it gives you a five weeks, so, and then hopefully by then, I don't know that two more weeks is going to really be a big deal if it's ten to fifteen, ten or eighteen weeks now, it's going to be the middle of late fall anyway, or maybe even Christmas before, I guess that's what it looks like.
The money that you all raised is phenomenal.
It is.
And I, I don't want to rush it and I, y'all probably feel like it's not rushing it, y'all probably feel like it's lagging behind, but.
You got to realize this is fast tracking for government. We're likely going to get it done ahead of schedule if we're a mil, a governor in the military.
I think just having, um, the, the playground company will, are they, they're working on two D color renderings with our school colors and I think just that in itself and a timeline, I think will actually, you know, everybody will be excited about that.
Good, good.
Of course, everybody would be excited to have playground equipment, but I think a solid plan, I think would be, would be beneficial too.
Right, and I don't, I don't think it'd be in bad to say that the board has given our concept approval, it's just the details to make sure that it's going to work out right.
And that, that rendering will help you raise more money?
I, I think so too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Good, okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Good luck with seeing you back and hopefully we'll get the same proof for you soon.
Board members, I just want to say Ms. Rebo is also a faithful member of my parent advisory council. I appreciate her, her input, um, of her parenting shows, so thank you, Ms. Rebo.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Oh, good evening.
Okay, we've got, uh, Amber on the PC services contracts.
Excuse me, I'm not running out.
No problem.
He's younger, he wants to talk as long as we are. So these are all basically the ones we've been doing every year?
Yes.
Do you have any additional?
There are no new contracts this year, I'm sorry. All are the same.
Because it went through, it looked like auditory speech.
Speech, um, audiology, visual impairment, nursing, um. And then we have one for the communication access partners where we, we have one of our deaf interpreters out and we use CAP to send some in for our students who require sign language.
In that case, our only cost would be whether we need them or not. It's not a set fee.
It's the daily rate.
Increase?
I'm sorry? Um, the rate for CAP for the educational interpreter substitutes has not increased. We did have a couple of contracts that increased this year. Those that are hourly rates, we have a couple that stayed the same. We kind of see that every year, one or two increase, others stay the same.
So when it went up, was it large amount or was it percented by?
Um, no, we, we saw a couple of dollars an hour increase in a couple of our speech contracts.
Okay, I think we got everybody back, you want to tell us what?
Sure, so we.
These are for action.
Yes, they are for action for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, have nine contracts, um, all range from speech language that's in person and virtual speech therapy, um, personal nursing services for our students who require nursing in the school buildings, audologists for those who have hearing equipment and those types of needs, visual impairment for students who, we don't have any blind students currently in our district, but those who have visual impairments that require services. And then our communication access partners for substitutes with our educational interpreters for the deaf that are unable to meet in the building. So those are, those nine contracts cover all of those services.
Okay, I noticed several of them have travel time, talking to everyone, all the ones I saw should have thirty, within thirty minutes one way is included, there's no additional travel time called.
That's right, so we only, currently, we only pay travel to, um, CAP, which is the educational interpreter substitutes and, uh, Envision, which is the visually impaired. All the rest we don't pay, uh, we don't pay travel for, those are the two that we do, travels included in the contract.
Okay, any questions? As you're standing, we do them every year and as needed only. If they're, like for, for example, the foreign language, if we don't need an interpreter.
That's right, so we may not, so for example, last year, we had a Soliant contract signed and we did not use Soliant services last year. But we, we do have a candidate for, from Soliant moving into the next one here. So yes, there may be a contract that we don't utilize, but in the event that we have a mid-year departure or we have to pull somebody in, uh, we kind of put our feelers out to all the contractors that we have to find someone to fill our vacancies.
And then that's all funded through that?
The contracts actually come out of our state grant, we're not allowed to pay, well, some of them may come out of the sixty grant, but, um, where we bill Medicaid for a lot of these services, we're not allowed to pay for that money out of federal money since Medicaid's also federal, but yes, it comes out of the state, um, O thirty-two that we use.
Motion to approve.
Okay, all, all nine, okay, all nine. All right, motion by Mr. Ledso, second by Mr. Lawrence, to approve all nine contracts presented for the, uh, PC, PC services contracts. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, right?[1779.84] Although it's a favor, I, any opposed, no?
Thank you.
So I think we've looked at them enough, we've talked about them enough.
They're all the same, no new ones this year.
Got you. Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
So I have.
Thank you, Ms. Rebo.
Thank you. Close is all we have left?
Yep.
Okay, so I need to read the comment, what we got here for public content. Form will enter into closed session for the following reasons, prevent disclosure of information, privilege, competence, or status of law, included by number of due to the general statute, one fifteen C dash three nineteen, one fifteen C dash four oh two, and one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven. To discuss the price or any material terms of contract for the acquisition of real property pursuant to one forty-three, three eighteen eleven also, and consider the qualification, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or a prospective public officer or employee pursuant to general statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven. God, shut your mouth, somebody's moved. That was easy, wasn't it? Mr. Whitaker said, yeah, I made the motion to go into closed session. Mr. Hudson, second. Any further discussion? Aye for everybody.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? We're in closed session.